I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Quinlan, could we please have the indication?
We come together this evening for the purpose of conducting the business of the Hanover County Schools.
Lord, we pray that everything that will be decided at this meeting will be done in the best interest of all children. We ask that you bless our board members and our superintendent with wisdom and discernment to make wise decisions. We thank you for our many excellent teachers, administrators, and employees who work hard to make a positive difference every day. We thank you, Lord, for the distinct privilege to serve and work in a great school system and a great community. Father, we ask a special prayer for our nation during these challenging times. We pray for our servicemen and women charged with protecting us at home and abroad. And now, dear Lord, we thank you for all of these things, and we ask a special blessing over all of the children of New Hanover County Schools. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Quinlan. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance of hosting colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to say thank you to the New Hanover High School Army Junior ROTC, Principal Dr. Rob Morgan, Instructors Master Sergeant Jose Denegine and Lieutenant Colonel Mark Hafer. We'll invite them back up in just a few moments so that they can introduce themselves and give their name, grade level, and their rank. I also want to say thank you to the Snipes Academy of Arts and Design Choral Program, Principal Rachel Manning, under the direction of Instructor Krista Faison. Thank you, and if you can take over from here and have your students introduce themselves and give their grade level. Thank you.
My name is Alicia and I'm in second grade.
My name is Jamoria and I am third grade.
My name is Jayla and I'm in third grade.
My name is Faith and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Simone and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Mariah and I'm in second grade.
My name is Soraya and I'm in third grade.
My name is Willie and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Emery Deppa and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Camille and I'm in third grade.
My name is Jayla and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Deanna and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Mackenzie and I'm in third grade.
My name's Josiah and I'm in the third grade.
My name is Deanna and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Zania and I'm in the fourth grade.
My name is Zania and I'm in the fifth grade.
My name is Amor and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Mackenzie and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Ava and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Nehemiah and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Command Sergeant Major Juwan Laura and I'm a senior.
I am Cadet Major Nicholas Morrison and I'm a senior.
Hello, I am Cadet Staff Sergeant Andrew Thompson and I am a sophomore.
I am Cadet Major Juwan Watkins-Brown. I'm a junior.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Adams, would you please call the roll? Here. David Portman?
Here.
Stephanie Adams? Here. Desambolio?
Here.
Judy Justin? Here. Nanette Nichols? Here. Bill Quinlan? Here. Thank you. Moving on to item number two, approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? And if so, I would call for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Are there any additions or deletions? I hear none. All right, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item number three, approval of the minutes. We have, do you want to do this as a, to approve both at the same time? Is everyone okay with that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I call for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from December 12th and the regular meeting minutes from January 8th, 2019. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Moving on to item number four, recognition of achievements. First item is community partnership with the Kiwanis Club.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, we are very fortunate to have Mr. Bill Meltano here. He is the president of the Kiwanis Club, and he's going to share with us how his organization encourages leadership through the Ki Club at our high schools, among other helpful services that support our schools. Bill, are you here? There he is.
Anybody nervous? Good. Well, good evening. I want to thank the New Hanover County Schools for allowing us the opportunity to speak this evening. And in preparing for this meeting, this presentation, I thought it might be good to talk a little bit shortly about the history of Kiwanis, especially Kiwanis here in Wilmington, and then talk more in detail about the partnership with New Hanover County Schools. What a lot of people know us as is the pancake people. We have been doing pancakes. This year will be our 49th year selling pancakes. It's our major fundraiser. It is always the first Saturday in November, so if you've got your phone with you, either your iPhone calendar or your Google calendar or on your Android, go ahead and mark that date, 6:30 to 12:30. This is one of the things we look forward to every year. All the members participate in selling tickets as well as us cooking tickets at Hoggard Elementary. Hoggard Elementary, Hoggard High School. Going back a little bit about the history of Kiwanis, it actually started in 1915 in Detroit. A bunch of businessmen got together and called themselves the Supreme Lodge Benevolent Order of Brothers. After, I'm sure, a couple meetings, they decided that name was too long, and they decided a year later to become the Kiwanis, which is actually an Indian name, which means Nunk Kiwanis, which means we trade. And their main motto in 1920 was "We Build," and they, of course, then changed the motto in 2005 to "Serving the Children." When the group first got together, they were a business networking group. After several years, they decided to be specifically involved with serving children. Our Kiwanis organization is not as old as the original organization. It actually started in 1920. The Carolina District was developed, both North and South Carolina, and we received our charter in May of 1920. That is actually the picture of the original charter. It actually is given to the president every year. Kind of a funny story is with the past hurricane, our past president Toby Bacante was a little concerned about evacuating Wilmington, and his thing was, okay, what do I need to take out of my house? This was one of the things he wanted to make sure he took, because he didn't want to be that guy that lost the original charter. A little bit about our Kiwanis Club. When we started in 1920, we decided we needed to sponsor some child organization. So, of course, our original organization we worked with and still work with today was called the Brigade Boys Club. Now, everybody knows it as the Brigade Boys and Girls Club. And we've been supporting that group, like I said, since 1921. Going over now, talking about the partnerships that we have. The most recognized one that most high schools are familiar with is the Ki Club. The Ki Club was actually founded in 1925, and its purpose is to, you know, allow service programs for high school students. How many people here in the room actually were a member of Ki Club when they were younger? Okay, thank you. I see a few hands. They just, they wanted to be shy. And then, thank you, we got one up on the front as well. So, a lot of people familiar with it. I tried to research the history, and fortunately, our archives were not very available, and to find out, when did we start working with the Ki Club as, at Kiwanis here in this area? I did ask a few members that we have, and we can verify that we know we had a, New Hanover High School had a group in 1962, because one of the guys' brothers was a member of the Ki Club. We know Hoggard was 1969, and well as several members were there in the 70s, so we know it goes back a long way here in New Hanover. The challenge we have now is, of course, trying to get the group re-initiated. Because of the hurricane, we were required to have teacher advisors to help run the club, and I'm excited to announce that we've already got Ashley High School back up and running. Catherine McLamb, who's a math teacher there, had a, sent out some emails and announcements, and they had 47 kids sign up to be part of Ki Club. We're also working with Cheryl Colston over at Hoggard, and there was a, an interest meetings both on the 23rd and 24th of January, and unfortunately, I don't have the updated results. But one of the things we do for the Ki Club is we help them, they help work us at the annual pancake breakfast. We help support them. In the past, we've sent them to the national Ki Club conventions. We also, whenever we meet with them, when they have their local, their meetings within the schools, as well as if they are having some sort of service project, we make sure it gets communicated back to the Kiwanis members, so we can also help participate in any way that we can. With the difficult time of the year with Florence, we, the Ki Clubs really weren't getting together after Florence, so the, with the pancake breakfast, we're kind of excited that we at least had the Hoggard Beta Club, the National Honor Society, and the JR ROTC all helped us this year at the pancake breakfast, which typically the Ki Club helps every year. One of the things, too, we do with the Ki Club is with the pancakes, any tickets that they sell, we give them 50% of the proceeds, so they can use for their club. The scholarship program is, and I apologize, I forgot to move the clicker, is a program we've been doing with the schools since 1964. It's called the George Chadwick Memorial. The recipient of the scholarship receives $2,600 per year for a four-year degree, and as well as the runner-up gets one year of $1,300. And this is actually for any New Hanover County student that goes to UNCW. This scholarship program, we work with all the guidance counselors that I have listed here. It's a very formal process. We have, we have a scholarship committee that sends out letters and timelines. They, of course, then submit applications, and then we have a luncheon with the counselors, and they present the applicants. And they can present up to three applicants from the schools. I've actually sat in on those meetings, and the scary part is every person you hear about, you go, that's the winner. That's the winner. And it's really, you know, it's, so I never want to ever be on that committee, and I've already told them, you know, as I continue my career in Kiwanis, I will not be on the scholarship committee because I couldn't do it. But it's, those guys do a great job, and gals. The scholarship program, year-to-date, we have given over close to 230,000 for New Hanover County students, and we have 96 recipients so far of the scholarship. What's neat about it is every year, we have a special program at our Kiwanis meeting. We invite them, we invite the award winners as well as past winners, and they come back, and, of course, the winner tells us what their goals are. The past winners tell us their progress at school, and it's kind of fun to see them grow as speakers, from their freshman year to their senior year. Just this year, we had a gentleman who won the scholarship in 2009 from Hoggard, John Bowen. He now was a veterinarian and went to NC State to get his veterinarian degree after graduating from UNCW, and he talked about the importance of, and what the Kiwanis scholarship did to him, because he was in a, family had some financial hardships, and it was allowed him to cut back on his job. He was continually working while he was at UNCW, but allowed him to focus on his studies, and he did quite well. And he actually was recently featured in the UNCW magazine last summer. Last but not least, of course, we, one of the programs we do is called, we call it the Alderman Elementary Flash Card Program. We started working with them in 2015, since they're literally across the street from our weekly meeting. We're at First Baptist Church, so Activity Center, so they're across the street, so we approached them, and we currently, we started out with having eight volunteers who helped work on their vocabulary with the fifth graders. It's now expanded to several days a week. I think it's now Monday and Tuesday. I don't know what the days, I forget the days off the top of my head, and it's grown because, of course, the number of students over there. The depth of the program has also gone into doing some of the released end-of-grade science test questions and reviewing them with the, with the, our folks. And, of course, we work with the young lady over there, Jessica Williams, who's an instructional coach. And just next, I just put a little quote from one of the current teachers we work with, Tyler Schumate. He said, "I decided to do the groups again this year because we have a lot of students that can benefit from the small group reviews." The work, the volunteers also do a great job of explaining unfamiliar words in ways that the students can understand and relate to. We are excited to continue these groups throughout the rest of the year. And I know that a lot of the volunteers, I enjoy going over there and interacting with the fifth graders. So that's pretty much every nutshell. I time myself at 10 minutes when I practice, but when I get in front, I probably did it in six or close to it, so I apologize. In closing, I want to thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to speak. We hope to continue. We're actually going to be celebrating our 100th year next year, and I'm hoping when I'm gone, we'll have another 100 years with the relationship of New Hanover Schools and Kiwanis. If anybody's interested in more information about us, my phone number's up there, as well as my email, and thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do for our schools. I appreciate it.
It's Dr. Wilmers, the Assistant Superintendent of HR, to come forward as we recognize our National Board Certified Teachers. Dr. Wilmers.
It is a very good thing that we do each year to recognize our National Board Certified Teachers. And for those of you that don't know, National Board Certification is one of the highest achievements that a teacher can earn during her career, and it is a national sort of award or recognition. And North Carolina leads the nation with the highest number of nationally board certified teachers, and New Hanover County leads North Carolina with some of the highest numbers of nationally board certified teachers. So with that, it is an honor to welcome you here tonight to recognize these folks. What I'd like to do is call their name, ask them to come up, give them a little plaque, and ask them to remain just for a little while while we take their picture. This group is, just achieved this, they've just gotten this, then we're going to recognize another group who has renewed their, their national boards. So with that, let's start off with Justin Armstrong from the International School at Gregory. Emily Austin, Wrightsboro Elementary School. Brittany Marden, Pine Valley Elementary School. Jog on up here. Doing good. Jennifer Booth, the International School at Gregory. Andrea Britt, Williams Elementary School. Jennifer Johnchoke, Cottington Elementary School. Andrea Kroom, Holly Shelter Middle School. Lauren Flint, Murrayville Elementary School. Mary Faschetti, Eaton Elementary School. Ashley Hawkins, Pine Valley Elementary School. Olivia Jarman, Hoggard High School. Leslie Keegan, Noble Middle School. Rebecca McHenry, Bradley Creek Elementary School. Carolyn Page, Ogden Elementary School. Gretchen Parker, Forest Hills Global Elementary School. Kaylee Wagner, Williston Middle School. And Jessica Ward, Eaton Elementary School. These are all of our new National Board Certified Teachers. Let's give them a round of applause. Would you just like a picture of all them together? Now let me introduce our teachers who've renewed their National Board Certification. First is Jennifer Anderson from Pine Valley Elementary School. Susan Baker from Murrayville Elementary School. Kimberly Burstett from Hoggard High School. Jennifer Burdette from New Hanover High School. David Demuro from Wrightsfield Beach Elementary School. Ryan Hawke from Ashley High School. Sarah Hawkes from Parsley Elementary School. Angela Hewitt from Ashley High School. See, you win this once, and you just don't think you need to come back again, so we understand. Tanya Jones from Laney High School. Ah, Tanya's here, hey! Jana Lennon from Bellamy Elementary School. Kelly Meddick from Holly Shelter Middle School. Randy Miskish from Holly Shelter Middle School. Sheridan Moffett, Lake Forest Academy. Kylie Shanahan from Eaton Elementary School. Anne Suddles from Pine Valley Elementary School. Stephanie Too from Forest Hills Global Elementary School. And Robert Turk from Hoggard High School. All right, let's get, let's give these folks a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes our recognition.
Thank you, and that concludes our recognition ceremony this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Claudia. All right, moving on to item number five, call to the audience. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, I will retain the right to limit discussions on a particular topic when such topics become slanderous or personal in nature. The first person to sign up is Sonia Patrick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sonia Patrick. I currently chair the New Hanover Chapter of the National Black Leadership Caucus. We're an organization of leaders regardless of political or religious affiliation. I'm here today to talk about Williston. Personally, my mother was a class, was a student at Williston, class 1949. My brother was the last class, Isaiah Gregory Jackson. He was graduated at the last class of Williston in 1968. My sister, older sister, did not, unfortunately, did not get to attend there as I didn't. However, the spirit of the Tigers live on. Without question, it is indeed the greatest school under the sun. To close Williston, we'll be closing a very important part of not only local history, but national and international history. We've had national figures there, for example, like Metallock Lemon. Today, we, being it's Black History Month, you have Joseph Badneil, one of the Greensboro Four, who attended Williston, along with Athelia Gibson and other leaders there. So we ask the board to can, do whatever you can to maintain this school so that it will be a high school as it was in the past. It should have never closed 50 years ago, and it's a shame we have to fight the same fight that we fought 50 years ago. And it shows that nothing has changed. But we ask the board to be a board of the future, to make it better for all, because Williston is not only about the local history, but it's international and national history. And I thank you for organizing the community forum and other steps that you have taken as far as keeping the doors of Williston open. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening.
The next person is Deandre Corneth.
Hello, guys. Thank you. My name is Deandre Corneth. I was born and raised here in Wilmington. My mother and father put four kids through the New Hanover County School System, and they put four kids through college on a very modest salary. And by modest, I'm being modest. In the early 70s, the Wilmington Ten had an issue with the state of North Carolina, and those guys and one lady was upset because Williston was closed as a high school. Well, that was something that was imposed on New Hanover County by the courts to integrate. We had New Hanover High School and Williston High School within a half mile of each other. One of them had to go. And just like then, this is now, there were no African-Americans on the school board. So the majority black school was closed. Today, New Hanover County Board of Education, you guys do a great job for whatever it is you do, but to bring Williston back as a high school would be a disservice to the community. Our community was destroyed when our high school was closed. We had a lot of, we had a majority, we had more than a majority, we had more than 90% of the teachers were African-Americans. They're not there now. You guys just gave awards and plaques to quite a bit of people, educators here in New Hanover County, not one an African-American, male or female. So if Williston is reconstituted as a high school, the teachers, the educators that pushed us along to make Williston the greatest school under the sun, they're gone. I don't think you can recruit them back. And actually, it would be against the law for you to recruit just African-Americans to go to, to be educators at a high school. Today, New Hanover County Board of Education is doing a disservice to the community, and my community, because the elementary and middle schools that kids in my neighborhood go to, they have F ratings, Snipes, DC Virgo, and Rachel Freeman. If you bring kids from a failing school, and then put them all together in a high school, you should expect the same results. It should fail also, and so will those students. Integration brings about awareness of different communities. Because we're separated, we are integrated in name only, but in all the high schools across this county, and the segregation that we have brings about fear because these people don't understand each other across cultures and across neighborhoods. So how is it that a black child is going to go into a white school, a majority white school, and not feel as if they're second-class citizens? They come from a failing elementary, your other parents are making more than their parents, and now it's been proven that the kids, the black kids, don't have the education. So of course, the white kids are going to feel superior. And that's just high school. That's going to create a lot of problems among the races because you guys are failing our schools and our community.
Next is Brenda Roberts-Fong. Brenda Roberts-Fong. Okay, moving on. Next to sign up is Andre Brown.
Superintendent Markley, board members, my name is Andre Brown, and I am here also to speak on the future of Williston. I'm a volunteer at Williston Middle with Bobby Garcia. He's an eighth-grade science teacher there, and he organized the event, the community forum, on last Tuesday. I also attended the Williston Exploratory Committee meeting on this past Thursday, and it's one of the reasons I was here, because after leaving it, I wasn't sure if the community message had been communicated. But before coming here today, I don't, Mr. Warpman, he issued a statement regarding the shift, the focus shifting from the performing arts school, so I do commend you for doing that, getting out ahead of that. One takeaway from the exploratory committee meeting that I found, I did some research on some folks on the board, and in my estimation, Ms. Justice's views best reflect those of the persons at the community event on Tuesday. So, and Mr. Warpman, yours not so much, and I don't know if you're the chair, but you seem to be like the leader of the exploratory committee. So I would endorse Ms. Justice being on the committee. I don't know how that works, but I think that would be beneficial to the future of Williston. Next, I think before we can solve the problem with low-performing schools, not just at Williston, but at any, all of our schools, or all of our low-performing schools, we have to look at the main cause, which was the shift to neighborhood schools. That can, and there's a direct link to low-performing schools and the shift to neighborhood schools. I think that we should move forward to, to better socially, there's two options as I see it. One, we can move towards more racially balanced schools that have economic integration, or we can provide Williston with the adequate resources that it needs to support the needs of its student population. Now, the former, I think, would be less burdening, less of a burden on the taxpayers. And in closing, Mr. Warpman, you and I have a few things in common, I found. I think you graduated from Hanover High School in 1993. I graduated from Hogard High School in 1998. You are the vice, you're the vice chairman of the New Hanover County School Board, you're an attorney, you are successful in life, and you and I both attended schools that were, that economic integration and were racially balanced. And I'm also an attorney, and I'm here to hold, you know, this board accountable. And so the point of that is to prove to you that it worked, and you and I are living proof of it.
Next speaker is Lynda Pierce Thomas.
Good evening. I'm Lynda Pierce Thomas, and I'm asking you to let your imagination lead you for the next few minutes. Imagine having an inner-city school that once was failing become a star in our school system and a school that all in the county and state want to emulate. Imagine having a school that has the highest standards of learning and expectations that students must succeed. Imagine students having a strict, technologically infused, strong academic course of study where they are taught by whatever means necessary for the highest level of learning to take place. For a portion of the day, students would be able to participate in an extra elective program which allows them to learn a trade with skills that they can use to become gainfully employed in our community or elsewhere. Imagine teachers who volunteer to teach at Williston because the school's goals are in line with that of a world-class school system, where students are able to be successful wherever they go in life. These teachers would demand excellence and commit to providing for the needs of the students individually and collectively. Imagine students being so proud of their school that they still love it 51 years after they leave. I don't have to imagine it. I went to that school, Williston. I challenge you to follow your imagination and make it happen again. Make it once again the greatest school under the sun.
I want to first acknowledge the great task that is set before each of you, who had the courage to put your name on a ballot and the endurance that you will display throughout your prospective terms. I've always believed there is a cheaper way to heaven other than that of being an elected official. On behalf of the Southern Coalition for Equal Protections Under the Law, we want to express our disappointment regarding reports by the media, Facebook posts, and community gossip regarding your decision to ignore a cold history of improprieties by school administrators. We have not yet received a formal response, but will continue to check the mail. Whereas this school board entered into a closed session and possibly illegally voted against the welfare of thousands of students, we adamantly condemn such action. Whereas we applaud your actions to comply with Title IX federal law, we are saddened that school attorneys are just now correcting a longstanding violation of federal law. This dereliction in duty has placed the equal rights and protections of students at the discretion of one school administrator and brings into question whether complaints over the years were accurately handled. Whereas there is some belief that this board either lacked the authority to conduct an independent investigation or the means to do so, we recommend your attorneys review the judicial functions of school boards and advise this school board accordingly. You will likely find that not only do you have the power to investigate, but you have the power to hold hearings and subpoena witnesses. Lastly, there are two of your top administrators in New Hanover County who have went on record to say that the information contained in the report asking for an independent investigation was false. We passionately ask both of them to join us in convincing you to conduct an independent investigation, hold hearings, and put this matter to rest. In the process, their names will either be cleared or the truth made public. By doing this, we all can get back to doing what is most important for the children and families of New Hanover County. Anything outside of an independent investigation will implement each of you as co-conspirators to child sexual abuse and discrimination. Yes, ma'am?
Before we go on, I don't normally have a response to a speaker, but I think we need to clear the air on a few things here, because I cannot stand aside and let someone just spuriously condemn our board and our system the way that you have, sir. Since you dropped that information on cases last month, there have been news reports, and there have been false allegations of a vote that we did not take, and allegations that this board has allowed stuff to go on that has not gone on. This board is a quasi-judicial board, which means we are the last stop of appeals for employees and for students who have been long-term suspended or have been expelled. That is our role, which means it goes through the schools, and then it goes through central office, and then it comes to us. That is our role, which means you are alleging a conspiracy all the way through. If we have information, we turn it over to outside agencies, and all of the cases that you've talked about, the information has been turned over to outside agencies. So I suggest, and there are active investigations going on in some of those cases, which I will not infringe upon, because I will not jeopardize those cases. So if you have information, I would highly suggest you turn it over to those agencies for them to be investigated. In fact, I encourage it. I encourage anyone to come forward, and I would dare say that anyone on this board would also encourage the same thing. So you are alleging that the old board and the new board have conspired somehow to cover up a bunch of information in cases. I will not go over those cases, because I will not violate any kind of FERPA laws. I will not do that to our employees, and I will not do that to our students. But I will not stand aside and allow you to cast all these allegations on all of these individuals. This board, I, we sat down, we did not have to cover your cases, we did, and this board Thank you.
Sir, I think your time's up.
Madam Chair, I'm essentially deviating from protocol, and you need me to respond to that?
No, I do not. I had my point of privilege after you had yours. Thank you.
I was just asking since it was a deviation from the normal protocol.
You also did receive a formal response.
And I have not received that in the mail, but thank you very much.
Next on the list, Jan Davidson.
Hi. My name is Jan Davidson. I am the parent of an eighth grader who has attended Williston since the sixth grade, and before that, my child was at Winter Park, both of which, which are considered by the state to be failing schools, both of which I feel have given my child an excellent education and are a model for how the world should work. I've been following the conversation about making Williston into an arts high school. I emailed you all on January 11th about the proposal, haven't received any response, and I was one of the people who spoke at the community forum held at Williston, one of the few one of the few parents of a child that attends Williston for all their classes. There have been lots of articles and comments about the idea of Williston as a high school. And during my minutes, I want to talk about the middle schoolers. I'm saddened and discouraged by the fact you are all willing to table comprehensive middle school redistricting and came up with this plan that has kids from the downtown traveling all the way out to Noble or Holly Shelter to go to school. I believe we should come up with a comprehensive plan, using busing if necessary, to desegregate our schools, improving educational opportunities for all our children. While I love my kid goes to school a mile from my house and three blocks away from my work, I would embrace the idea of him going to a school further away if it made all our schools fairer for all our kids. Closing Williston as a middle school doesn't do that. It's unfair and unconscionable that, to only send children from downtown in our city away from their parents without discussion when you aren't sending kids from more suburban, predominantly white, schools across the county. It's very reminiscent of the unequal and high-handed behavior that we saw from the school board in the segregated era, when your predecessors dragged their feet, refused to implement Brown v. Board of Education in 1964 for more than 14 years, and then closed Williston Senior High School over the summer of 1968 and sent Williston kids to New Hanover and Hogged. I want to request that you, as a board, be more transparent and acknowledge and discuss the ramifications of this proposal on our middle schools in a thoughtful and public way. It's not clear to me, when you floated this idea, that you used any empirical data. Did you talk about what happens to Gregory's middle schoolers? Did you consider how big the new catchment area for Williston is? Now, DC Virgo is not a county school, and what effect that has on bus routes and distances? Did you talk to the MLK Center or the other downtown agencies that help our children about how they were going to get there after school? Do you know how many Williston kids go to extracurricular activities that they walk home to school from, from school from? They won't be able to do that if they end up in Holly Shelter. We deserve answers to these very pragmatic questions and the bigger questions about providing fair and equal access and treatment for all our children. Thank you.
Next speaker, Kenneth Chestnut, Senior.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Chestnut. I'm a graduate of Boston Senior High School, class of 1964. I had the benefit of attending the workshop, their town forum that was at Williston a couple of weeks ago, and have since been tracking some of the discussions as well as talking to other alums and citizens. I have three perspectives to talk to you about this evening. One is, I'm a mentor in Williston two days a week as part of the 100 Black Men, and we mentor sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And I've done that for over three years now. And I've seen the quality of the students, the dedication of the staff, and the students' focus improve over that period of time. And so I think it's critical that you consider the middle school, all that it means to the community, all that it means in connection with Gregory, before a decision is made to do away with the middle school. The second perspective I have is, as an alum of Williston, very often we talk about the academic achievements, rightfully so. They were noteworthy, and all of these successful alums, many of which are here, they speak for themselves in all areas of supporting and being successful, whether that's military, whether that's business, education, across the board. The things that we don't talk about as much is the vocational program at Williston. I'm a beneficiary of that vocational program. I studied mechanical drawing. I was one of the nine successive trade contest winners in consecutive drawing during my stay at Williston. What that allowed me to do was become a civil engineer. So I left Williston focused on becoming an engineer because of my experience at Williston, and went on to graduate. And so I understand the importance and the foundation of a successful vocational or trade program. And so, considering the importance of that foundation, I recommend that if Williston is changed to a high school, a senior high, and I'm open to that, then we should build on that foundation of the vocational school, overlaying technology as we see it today so that our students can go and be successful in the various trades that is desperately needed today. Obviously, there could be another curriculum, but I strongly suggest and support that you consider that vocational trade consideration. The third perspective that I have is, I recently retired as the president and CEO of a real estate development and construction company in Atlanta. And so I fully understand the shortage of trained workers that we see today. It's not just in construction, it's in every trade, whether it's automobile assembly or all of the opportunities that our students are missing. But I definitely see the deficit here in Wilmington, particularly in the construction trades, because that's what I know, and I know it well. And so, there's a ready market, a deep market, a market that's sustained over a long period of time for these students that will graduate from this program. So I highly recommend you consider those options as you're moving forward with the decision-making process. Thank you.
Next speaker, Julius Ray James, Jr.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? I'm Julius James. Some refer to me as Gina's husband, or Autumn's dad, you know, or my mother Virginia's son. And I come to you today not possibly in the same capacity as most of the other speakers and stuff like that, but it is about Williston. And so I just want to talk about the power of Williston and how much Williston means to me in this particular community. Williston has, is, and should always be what they call a pillar in this particular, or a staple in this society. And to particularly look at it for its historic and how much it means to the Black community. We've been in, you know, race relations for a certain number of years, but we got to see what ways that we can begin to look at and create more healing in this particular society. And to be able to see what ways that we can not look at some of the negative aspects or what's going on, and seeing what we can do what's best for the school, for the community, for the children, and all. Well, Williston, I personally did not go to Williston. My parents, my mother is a Williston graduate. My dad's a Williston graduate. My aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews, cousins, even I had one child to graduate from Williston. I have a grandchild, and he'll probably go to Williston if it's allowed. And so to begin to look at the systematic ways in which we're doing things, and we're kind of beating this issue every so often. But how can we particularly keep the peace? I'm particularly proud of a lot of things in this, in this city, in this country, in this world. I like to look at the positive aspects of life and how to see what ways that we can bring more positive out of each and every person in each and every situation that we're in. So when I look at this, we need to promote the altruism in which we're looking at and looking for. We need to look at how we can bring this community together and look at Williston as part of that movement in that direction. And then how much can we invest in our students? How much we can invest in the aspects of Williston? And the autonomy that it fostered for so many years? And it brought about that, was it an industrial school, right, of some nature? When my parents went there and they had automotives and things of the nature that the gentleman mentioned. So how can we particularly look to do that? Because I think that that's what life is going towards, specialization, and how we can do better where we're at and getting us better at knowing and doing things. And in order to do this, we have to have a positive productivity in which we look at getting positive outcomes. And are we really looking at that? And that's what we have to particularly put a more focus in. And these expectations, like we said, that Williston is the greatest school under the sun. Many of you will agree, the connection and the breakdown of the divisions that we have are running rampant, right? Racism, the financial or economic aspects of it all, or caste system, or even the educational system. But we can turn that around in a way in which we all look at, you know, what type of school would be best. Of course, not an alternative school, that's just a pre-adjudicated facility. We want to look at what we can do. We all, in art school, all of the high schools have an arts program. So I think more along the lines of the trade or the technicality, whether it stays a middle school or moves up, is to begin that kind of a focus. So, I know I'm running out of time here. So, right, we got to particularly ask ourselves, right? Are we looking to make a difference? You know, I mean, in this whole aspect, are we looking to make a mistake? And as we sit and we look and we think, we can come together collaboratively with the community, the community leaders, and all of us come together with love to make this a better place and, again, the best, the greatest school in the world, right? And, under the sun.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, administrative personnel, administrative recommendations, Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
We have one administrative recommendation, and that is from an assistant principal at Roland-Greys Middle School. And it is with pleasure that I welcome back to the district Lauren Nalepa, who serves, to serve as that assistant principal. Previously has served as a teacher at Winter Park and Freeman Elementary and as an assistant principal. Left this for a little while, but it's my pleasure to welcome Lauren back to the district. That's my recommendation.
Do I hear a move for approval?
So moved.
Back in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
She is here. She'll stand, be recognized, tell us who you brought with you. Thank you. That's the only administrative recommendation.
Welcome back. All right. Item number seven, Head Start, Head Start Liaison Report, Appendix B, Nelson Boyer.
Good afternoon, good evening. I have three items to discuss tonight. This is my first time, so, you know, we'll see how it goes. But the expenditure report, a COLA increase, and just the liaison report. So if you'll look at this first piece here, you can see our enrollment numbers. We have 260, 115 three-year-olds, 145 four-year-olds, and 58 returning. You guys have any questions on that? All right, that's a good start. Ms. Miles has been working with me, and Head Start in New Hanover County, I'm proud to say, is in the zone, so. Next is our expenditure report. We are, our target is, our percentage expenditure goal for January is at 67%. We absolutely expect to hit that, as you can see, almost all salaries. Any questions? Okay, next. And Shannon never leaves any stone unturned, so we applied for our COLA grant. It's something we have to do each year. It is just over $35,000, and every little bit helps. So thank you very much, Shannon. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir, and it's a great pleasure to work with you. We do need an action on this for COLA, Madam Chairperson. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for item number C, cost of living adjustment COLA grant?
So moved.
Second?
Back in.
Just out of curiosity, why do they make you apply for the COLA grant? And why would someone not apply for it?
Interesting. I got that same question asked earlier today. So that does happen. So, and it's an application process, it's not a given. So you have to go through the loops, and we will. March one.
So it's not a given that you would get the grant?
Correct.
Okay.
You have to apply.
Okay. So is it just a matter of the application not being corrected, being correct? Or is it that they decide that you don't need the COLA?
Actually, it's based on application process and related to the initiative, which would 1.77% of state salary increases. And I think we're projecting that, at least that, for next year. So as long as we're allocating those correctly to what the initiative and what the grant application is for, then we should be right on track.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the federal government basically says how much you can apply for. They set the rate, which is, what, 1.77 this year?
And it changes year to year often.
And it's based on what the annual appropriation is, so.
And we will use this 100% for those salary increases.
So you look up the, what they tell you it can be, and then you say, "I'm going to use it for the right thing," and then you turn in the grant?
They issue us a letter to tell us what we can apply for. Because we would ask for a lot more.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah. All right. All those in favor?
Yep.
Any opposed?
Oh, yeah, thank you for that. So, of course, my partner and I, we're all about advocating for preschools. So we have started our registration for 2019, 2020. So we have approximately 1,200 applications that cross our office. And we will be placing to date 875 students. So get the word out, and come out and apply. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. They'll get better.
Yeah, that was good.
Perfect.
Item number eight, information, item A, quarterly budget summary, Appendix E, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm presenting this information. Required by the local government commission that we give you a quarterly report of expenditures. It also shows our budget, year-to-date expenditures, encumbrances, or outstanding purchase orders, and remaining balance. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? When we go over our budget, when we do our budget workshop, are we going to go over the different? I know that we talked about kind of how we're going to frame that first budget workshop, but are you going to go over the different funds?
We're going to try to give a complete overview. Anything the board would like more detail on, we'll bring back to us every minute.
Okay. All right, great. Any questions? All right. So this is just for information, we do not need to take action, correct?
No, this is one that the states changed the regulations last year, so we've got to report this quarterly.
Okay. All right. If not, we will move on. Thank you, Ms. Small. Moving on to item number B, Title IX, Appendix H. There is no Appendix H, and it has my name after it. So I just want to provide a brief update. Mr. Boyer, Mr. Bullard, and Dr. Markley and I met briefly the other day to kind of talk about how we want to start this Title IX committee, kind of who wants to, who we think needs to be included, how we want to frame the committee, you know, what we want to do. And I'm sure it's going to deviate from that pathway, but we have a good start. Mr. Bullard has a list of about 20 names that, to start with. It may grow, it may shrink a little bit, but I think we have a good start with a good cross-section of individuals from the community, from the university system, from the K-12 system, parents. So I think that's a good start. And then, you know, we'd like to go over where we are, what the federal guidelines are right now, and where we want to go. So that's really kind of, you know, what we, really what we covered. But we're kind of keeping it general for now, because I think we're going to, you know, we're going to focus on once we get the committee together. So, Mr. Bullard, anything you want to add?
No, again, you know, I reiterate what you said earlier. There's nothing that we take more seriously. take more seriously than these type of issues. And, you know, we're going to work to make sure that we're serving the needs of all of our students, and this committee is going to be a big part of that, so.
But I think we need to, yeah.
Thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, thank you. But I think we need to leave it broad for now, because I don't, I don't want to, we don't want to leave anything out. We want to include everything that, that we possibly can, so.
And School Board Association is willing to come down, do a one-day training for that committee. They're also monitoring the rewrite of Title IX, which is going on now at the federal level, so they'll keep us updated on that as well.
Great, all right. Mr. Bullard, anything you want to add?
No, I think that's a good summary of what, what we did, and I look forward to working with the committee.
And it will be a public committee, so just to let you know, we will have, like I said, quite a few members of that committee. All right, moving on to item number C, Williston Exploratory Committee Update, Vice Chairman David Wortman.
All right, so in the process, I just want to start kind of where we were with the proposal that happened about six weeks ago, to address a couple of things. At no time have we ever talked about closing Williston. That is, that's not on the table, that's not been discussed, and that's not going to happen. Also, there's been some mention of an alternative school. We've never talked about it being as an alternative school. That, again, also is not something we ever talked about. The language may have gotten mixed up when people were out there referring to Williston, what we were trying to do, but it is not going to be an alternative school. To date, we've had two committee meetings. When the proposal by the board was originally made five weeks ago, we referenced a Durham School of Arts, and the intention to reference that school was to show a successful school that has done something a little bit different. It was to start the conversation. After we had started that conversation, there's been the Williston Forum, we've had a couple committee meetings, and we've listened to the community. We have 15 members on our Williston committee that have, that are made up of a teacher, assistant principal at Williston, some community members, I believe there's actually a couple of community members here today. I see three of them, there was three, that are actually on our committee. But we've kind of changed the focus a little bit. Instead of doing a singular, singular focus like an art school, instead we're looking at a more multifaceted school. I think the intention of, of the committee and the intention of the proposal, as we've heard people talk about, was to make Williston the best that it can be, to bring it back to the greatest school under the sun. I've heard from Ms. Patrick and Ms. Pierce that have come up here and referenced the history of Williston. And the committee, I think that's a major focus of what we're talking about, because we understand the history that Williston has in this town, the pride that Williston has in this town. And we're really talking about ways to keep that pride and further that pride into the future. So the last committee meeting, we talked about, as I said, taking a more multifaceted approach instead of a singular approach like an art school. There's been talk and interest that, that people are interested in the arts. There's been talk and interest that people are interested in a vocational school. We're going to expand our committee a little bit to add, hopefully someone that has knowledge with Cape Fear Community College, and the knowledge of what we're doing at C-Tech. There's certainly some, some great programs that we're doing at C-Tech. But there's also relationships that we can have with the community college that C-Tech is not covering, that we could maybe bring to Williston, and use that as a vocational high school to do some, some additional stuff. We've had suggestions from the committee to look at maybe some business development. The intention is to look at, at the school as a sixth through 12, which would keep that middle school, as well as make it a high school, but really prepare specifically Williston, that community, and provide them with some opportunities. So when they graduate from high school, they have, they have, continue to have options. They have options to enter the workforce. They have options to further their education, whether it be at relationships with Cape Fear Community College or other institutions around the area. I, I think the committee members, their intention when we discuss is, regardless of where we end up in this conversation, the discussion is to make sure that we, we can do everything possible at Williston to continue its tradition, continue its pride, and continue to make it the greatest school under the sun. So that's where we are in the process right now. Our next meeting is going to be next Thursday, actually Thursday, at three o'clock. There may be a couple new board members, or committee members at that, at that point, to kind of further what we're talking about. But I certainly want to also thank the committee members that have come to our, our meetings and that are on the committee. A couple of them are here today. I certainly appreciate them taking their time out of the day, them going into the community and talking to the community and bringing those, that feedback, because ultimately, it's the feedback that's, that's led us down this path, and led us to look at different options that are available. So I do appreciate what you all have done.
Mr. Wardman, guys, question?
Sure.
Just to clarify, there is no decision right now, there's nothing imminent, it's still in just the exploration phase?
Yeah, this isn't going to happen in August. This is, this is a discussion that I, I believe that we needed to have, and I'd like to continue to have, to bring ideas to the table. This is not something that's happening next year. This is something that we're going to meet again on Thursday, and, and Ms. Adams is, is on the committee with me. But it's something that we're going to continue to talk about, and continue to listen to the community.
Yeah, can I just add, you know, when I ran, when everybody ran, I think we all talked about transparency and being more open, and being more available. And I think that that was, that has been reflected with your work on the committee thus far. Ms. Adams, I commend you for that as well. I think the pushback on an art school was pretty heavy, and I think we listened. And I think that's just, that's a, that's a wonderful statement. And I've heard a lot from the community about how that feels different. That's something that I think should be commended, because we are definitely trying to get input. We will continue to do so, I imagine, on the committee. And thank you very much.
And if I can just add one thing, I would like to thank the Williston community for hosting the forum. They put that together. That was not the Board of Education that brought that committee together. That was the Williston staff and family that put together that group. So thank you, you know. Because so much of what we're doing and talking about right now came from that conversation. So it had impact, it was important, and we want it to continue. So thank you.
And if you're, if you're on the committee, if you can stand up just to show the people that are here. So, and I appreciate it.
And Mr. Wardman, your committee meetings are always open to the public, and you've had lots of visitors to come.
We have, 100 percent.
That's good.
And it'll be in this building on Thursday at three o'clock.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for that very thorough update. I appreciate it. All right, moving on to item number D, Policies for First Reading. Jeanette Nichols, Policy Committee Chairperson.
Okay, thank you. The policy committee met today, and our new members are Mr. Rodenbark and Ms. Justice. We looked at the policy 1320, that I'm asking you to review and waive first reading tonight, so that we can get this in place for the March meeting. It was suggested that we remove roll call, because roll can be taken from, by Mrs. Adams. Then we're going to add number 10, the Board Chairperson's report. We've been using Dr. Markley's spot for that, so we wanted to make it official. And then committee reports. So those who are serving as chair of a committee, if you have something to share, it would be helpful if you contacted certainly the chair or Mrs. Adams, so that you can get something in place. That we'll be looking forward to that, and maybe some minutes or something that were taken at your particular meeting. So like Dr., Mr. Wortman did tonight, that was very, very helpful, and I think that's where we'll look for those reports. So the second policy that we looked at, that we had intended to bring to waive for first reading, we put it on hold, because as we looked at it, we knew that we had already extended the scholarship application time period. So that's in place. And as we looked at the possibilities of allowing community college students that are still students in our system to apply, and they would take a different route, then we needed to ensure that the wording was accurate, and so that we wouldn't have to change it again. So we're still accepting the application. We'll go through this year's process, and then next year we'll have the policy ready for the advertisement.
Okay.
So, and then we had lots of other policies that we'll bring to you for first, your first opportunity to look at them. But they are online for all the community members to look at and offer us suggestions. And if you have any, those people who are out there or listening to us, we certainly need all the input that we can get. You see, we're all working together. So we will bring you some policies for next meeting. And we plan to have a policy committee meeting in March, right before the board meeting.
So just to be clear, we want, we are accepting applicant, applications from students who are planning to go to community college?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I wanted to make sure to get that information out to all of the counselors, that we are, we are going to accept this for, for our teacher scholarships.
And they'll go through the same process.
That's already going out. When we, when we just, when we knew we were going to review, we.
We need, yes, we need for the board agenda policy.
Okay, so that's, is that policy 1320?
Yes.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to waive first reading for policy 1320, Board of Education Agenda format?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, so I've been asked to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
So let's do that.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Just to waive first reading, you actually need a vote to approve the policy now that you've waived first reading.
Okay, let's, let's scoot back in.
I would make a motion to approve policy 1320. Is that correct?
1320.
1320.
Okay, there is a question.
I'll go ahead and second it.
All right, great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy 1320 is approved. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that motion.